I'd like to call the November 27th, 2018 College Place City Council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Peterson, would you leave our pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could all take a moment, for a moment of silence, to reflect on the duties that we're about to perform. Thank you all very much, please be seated. It's now our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the College Place City Council items not already on the agenda, please step forward to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing no one, before us is our consent agenda approving this evening's agenda. We're going to make one retraction, which is we're removing the executive session at the end of the agenda, but approving the council minutes from this evening, approving the city's insurance association of Washington, 2018-19 insurance policy and premium, approving reauthorization of the city of College Place participation in the Wal-Walla Valley micro business assistance program, and excusing the absence of council members Dickerson and Nyhagen. Is there a motion?
It's been moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland. Is there a second?
A second.
Been seconded by Ms. Sherman. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We do have an employee recognition this evening. Kenny Martin has been with us for 15 years, working in Public Works. Mr. Martin, thank you so very much for your service. You've had a great job for us, and we really appreciate the hard work that you do.
Thank you, George.
We're going to take a picture. Thanks, Kenny. I appreciate it very much. Here's your certificate. And... We do have an agenda this evening that has three public hearings. The first of those is the U.S. Department of Agriculture Grant Loan Program for stormwater utility street sweeper. Mr. Rizzatello.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. This item's fairly straightforward. As was stated in the stormwater utility plan and utility rate study of the past, we need a street sweeper for implementation of said utility. In accordance with said plan, we began to look for various grants and loans. The United States Department of Agriculture Rural Development Division, they have a community facilities grant where they evaluate the cities based on median income, the financial health, utility, poverty rates, several other things. And it has to be a city below the 10,000 population threshold to apply for said grant. They very much encouraged us to apply for this. A street sweeper is $240,000. The representative stated that we would score higher points if we had a match to that. So in the proposal, it was a $24,000 match, and then that leaves $216,000. Up that, the representative Marty Canacci of the Yakima office felt we could get a 75% grant for this street sweeper. If we get in the application now, because I guess a bunch of the money has not been obligated, if we waited longer, they would send the money back to DC and we wouldn't get anything. So therefore, that's what you see today. We're having a public hearing on this because that's required of the federal regulations of this program, and this is the last item that's holding us up before they can do the full-on evaluation and let us know what will ultimately occur from the grant loan perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello. Any questions for Mr. Rizzatello? So I'd like to open the public hearing on the U.S. Department of Agriculture Rural Development Grant Loan Program for a stormwater utility street sweeper. Anybody wishing to testify for or against that proposal, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Once again, anybody wishing to testify for or against the USDA grant loan program for a street sweeper, please step forward, state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to testify for or against the USDA grant loan program for a street sweeper, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman. Seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The public hearing is closed. The next public hearing, fiscal year 2019-24 Draft Capital Facilities Plan booklet. Mr. Rizzatello.
So we've gone over this several times in accordance with the Growth Management Act of State Washington. We need to have a public hearing for capital facility plan. Not going to make you go through all 88 slides again, so this is the summary of this. I've worked out data in a new, interesting way, too, that I'll show you in a bit. So what is capital facility plan? That's mandated as part of the State Washington Growth Management Act. It's forecasting the needs of capital facilities as well as proposal locations and capacities. And you also have to present a six-year plan that'll finance these capital facilities within projected funding capacities. In a way, it's a lot like a wish list. Nothing's set in stone, but still states trying to encourage cities within the opt-in and mandated plan and county staff plan for infrastructure. There's two misnumbers as far as capital facility plan versus capital budget. So capital facility plan, that is the plan in document or a wish list, in essence, of all-stars aligning what we need to do to make it happen. Capital budget is within the standard budget we do each year, and that's the stuff that actually gets funded each fiscal year. So there is a difference between the capital facility plan and capital budget. Prioritization. Projects within the list were broken up into essentially three priorities. The high priority means the project needs to occur as soon as possible. It's driven by useful life, state requirements, grant availability, facility failure, operation maintenance issues, and so forth. Medium, that means it needs to happen at some point, but it's not of a critical nature. And then the low prioritization means the project isn't really critical. Like, it won't happen unless grant money, we get grant money, or our development pattern grows to an extent where the project, the development impact fees and various development improvements help cover them up. So taken into account, I thought it'd be very interesting to see what the percentage breakdown is of the capital facility plan, because as you recall, it has high dollar figure to a little bit north of maybe $1 million over six years. So the high priority is a little bit north of 52 million or 65%. Medium is a little bit north of 18.5 million or 23%, and then low is 9.8 million or 12%. So as you can see, quite a bit of that is in the high, and the biggest proportion of that, as I said before, is the wastewater treatment plant, which will be trying to have positive dialogue with ecology about looking at the potentially lengthening that project based on our new flow meter and things that are helping us. Priority projects, ones that we are going to do next year, the Southwest College Place wastewater trunk line, that comes out $6.5 million. There's developers interested in that site. There's very good discussions occurring on this project, so we'll be able to come together with funded plan for that. Well, number one, number two, we're in the stages of replacing that. There's an initial well drilling contract tonight, so we'll move in full steam ahead on that. Wastewater treatment plant to show we're trying to make marked improvement toward that permit criteria. $300,000 is engineering. C Street, that's a very exciting project because that was funded by Transportation Improvement Board, the full corridor reconstruction, so street and storm. TIB Transportation Improvement Board will pay for that. Dark side of the project is that the infrastructure underneath the street is in the best condition, so we need to replace that, and that has a local impact, in essence, because can't fund that with grant. And then lines park renovation, we're hearing market money to be put toward that. Likely that would be occurring in fiscal year 2020 because that has a sizable financial cost of about $2 million. 1.3 million of that is the park improvements, such as splash pad, path, all the improvements and schemes you've seen. $700,000 is separating the pond from the creek, which needs to occur, so we have the pond for future generations. Capital Facility Plan summary, you can see the difference between 2019 and then 2024. In 2019, the primary function, it takes majority of it, is water utility because we're working on the well situation. However, in the sixth year, it actually moves over to wastewater, where that's about 45% where it's about that much, and that's because of the treatment plant issues. Facility plan, I get, they asked us again to go over, water is lion's share followed by wastewater, and then streets, that's all expensive stuff. And then the sixth year, wastewater is a little more than $36 million, followed by streets at $23 million, and then water at 13. And there's several projects in a six-year time period as far as low prioritization, where it really depends on our development patterns going south of the city. So with that, that is abbreviated overview of that plan.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Thank you for a very abbreviated. Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing for... Okay, let's get this right. The fiscal year 2019 to 2024 Draft Capital Facilities Plan. Anybody wishing to testify for or against that 19 to 24 plan, please step forward, state your name and address. Once again, anybody wishing to testify for or against the fiscal year 2019 to 24 Draft Capital Facilities Plan, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to testify for or against the fiscal year 2019 to 24 Draft Capital Facilities Plan, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Kilgore, preliminary fiscal year 19 budget hearing.
I'll cover first there. She lost her voice, and she'll correct me if I can tell them.
No wonder she's been smiling!
So bear with me. Okay, so a little bit different this year because we're trying to tie back to the strategic plan, everything that we've accomplished, and then moving forward. So this is a preliminary budget presentation for fiscal year 2019. As you may recall, mission statement is to provide leadership in effective fiscal responsible services, achieve our community's vision, is broken up into five goals: resource development, cooperation connection, infrastructure investment playing for prosperity, so basically economic development, and then optimal operations. I put in some results for various outcome metrics that are cited in said strategic plan for business starts for College Avenue in 2017. There were about two in the immediate corridor this year so far. There's about five city events. We've really picked that up. Thanks, Lisa, for all your work on that. In 2017, there's about five city lead events, and this year went up to seven. Interesting metric is Facebook followers, because there is a metric for social media, seeing how that reaches out. Last year, their likes were 675. This year, it's a little over 1,200, so we are increasing there. And then as far as streets, and this takes into account new road or gypsy or resurface, and in 2017 is a little bit over 5,000 linear feet, and then in 2018 is a little over 13,000. So we've really been doing good there. And then our staff, we've been slowly bringing that to where we were a couple of years ago prior to the recession. So thanks to the utility tax you all proved last year, went from 37 and up to 41. So I'll cover this very briefly. As you can see, we got a lot of grants this year. That's how we're able to do a lot of the bigger capital projects, and why I consider livability projects, such as movies in the park and things like that. That's grants and partnerships with the business community. And then there's top three accomplishments for various functions. Just for everybody's sake, I'll just read very brief. Administration, we end up in the opportunity zone, which is very good. It's one of two in the whole county. And then city work, we've been really stepping it up on community events and paperless boards and commissions, which is great. Finance, the paperless accounts payable from the document locator, and then finance policies, HR personnel manual, community development comp plan wrapped up, engineering, stormwater utility legal. We finally got to enter ties with the university and city of Wal-Walla. Fire, the ambulance, police, we end up having the officers and special enforcement officers. And then Public Works, Fourth and Academy Way, and then dealing with issues over in Broadway Davis, finally, where that's covered. So that was very brief highlight of where we were at this year, so now we're getting into the meeting, what the proposal is for next year. So continuing for 2019, it's continued implementation of the fiscal policies that we all went through over the last year or so. In-depth analysis of recurring costs, and then making sure the recurrent cost should exceed the recurring revenues, and then equipment replacement program, working toward funding all of that. So beginning fund balance, a little bit north of 14 million revenues, at a little over 37 million expenditures, a little at 39.8 million, and then fund balance is 11.6 million. We broke this out into basically the operating revenue and then non-operating revenue, so you can see the breakout of that. Total budget expenditures, I think this is very interesting because when you look at the numbers, at first you think with the difference in revenue and expense, oh, it isn't sustainable. Well, it's because we're really dealing with these long-term capital issues, so we're fixing stuff where, yeah, there is a slight O&amp;M cost, but it's fixing issues that have been there for a while, such as C Street. So capital expenditures are a little over 15 million. Operating expenditures, a little north of 12 million, and non-operating's a little north of 11. So total budget personnel FTEs, budget is 44.25, requested was 51.25. The new FTEs, suggestions are as follows. Special enforcement officer, that's outcurring expense, and that's reshuffling a lot of duties since we're having detective retirement. We've had demand for code enforcement, animal control. They will be the umbrella person for a lot of that. We've mentioned this prior, but with all the grants that were given, with all the grants were given, that requires paperwork and reporting, and we really need backup in the front office because all the paperwork, it's getting to be an issue juggling everything, as well as the community events. It all requires people, so these are very labor-intensive organizations. And then there's the two positions that were approved since this council approved the utility rate study and implementation of the stormwater utility next year. So the engineering tech, which we have someone that accepted a job offer, so that's great. We'll have backup there. And then the stormwater utility worker, the O&amp;M person for Public Works. Recurring expenses, total budget is a little north of 8 million. Reoccurring revenues is 6.3 million. Reoccurring expenditures is 6.6 million. Request is a little over half a million. Minimum policy fund balance is 20% reoccurring revenues, so 1.2 million. And then the budget and then fund balance is a little over 2 million.
There's a typo. There's a typo. And I can't remember which numbers, but recurring revenues exceed recurring expenditures by 52,500.
That makes more sense. I'm sorry. Is that supposed to be an eight? I can send out the number.
That's supposed to be an eight, but it's based on the interfund balance.
Okay, so recurring expense, fund revenues, so you can see a lion's share here, is basically taxes, and then that's followed up by licenses and permits, and then state entitlements. And then this right here is just a breakout of where the monies in recurring expenses go on. So as you can see here, the biggest percentages is police, which is just north of 2 million. Fire, which is just north of 1 million, so 15.71%, and then interfund transfers at 1.6 million, 324%. So recurring expense, notable items here. So marketplace fairness sales tax, that is from people buying stuff online, and since that wafer case out of South Dakota got decided, now there is tax being collected on such items. That's a 45,000 estimate, and that's only going to keep growing. Business license, since there is a slight fee now, that's at 10,000, that's your market would back off the funds. 515,000, water and wastewater utility taxes, 260,000, the permit revenue, and then there's a big increase in the investment interest, and then a lot of the grants, as you saw, there was an exhaustive list earlier. Recurring expense, notable items, you have the special election cost since there are elections next year. There's also proposals for some software, and that's in the extended IT plan that's later in the admin report, so I can go a little bit deeper in that there. But next request, which is the software helps satisfy the J-LARP requirements for essentially public records requests that likely will trickle down to us. And then this open book budget software that helps automatically put together budget books and just simplifies the process a lot easier. There is software for police, the fingerprint system, increase in the EMS volunteer stipends since we are doing the basic life support, and then the EMS patient record software, and then 10,000 for Blue Zone. Other items, 47,000, finish-up development regulations, because that's really implementing goals in our comprehensive plan. 30,000 for an exclusive agriculture zoning designation study, that's an issue. That city of Wal-Walla, us and county are grappling with because we're surrounded by that ag land, and that makes extended, or doing things with urban growth boundary long-term very problematic. There needs to be a study for that. Historic property inventory has grant funded, so that's straightforward. Development impact fee study to figure out what's the best way for the capture of the money through the improvements, whether it's through SEPA or through State Bernal Protection Act or development impact fees. The 7,200 for micro business program, and 6,000 for youth. And then our third installment in the pool, and then the Gold Star Memorial, which presentation you saw last council. FTEs, so requested 39, budget 33. The newer position is special enforcement officer, and then deputy court finance director, and that's allocated between current expense and then said utility funds. Then there are interfund transfers to support other funds. Street fund, 450,000, technology reserve, so a lot of software for various functions that depends, run through there, 92,000. Facility maintenance, 200,000. Employee benefit reserve of 50, and then stormwater utility of 85,000, that provides SEPA capital as the revenue starts to come in, and then also to front-end some of the street sweeper stuff since there is a local management there. Other notable items, cars buying, so 489,000, the fire engine at 51,000, and then commercial drive, they're a little over 140,000. Equipment replacement program, if you look in the administrative report, I actually put together a little slideshow that goes over everything, just like the capital facility plan, except with equipment replacements, so you'll see that all itemized and there. The fire EMS, 185,000, police 95,000, the travel vehicle.
You really don't need to read every line.
Okay. Okay. I'll just go through. Okay. Technology reserve fund, so all ITs consolidate, the ending fund expenditure budget, a little north of 91,000, ending fund balance is 294,000. Employee benefit reserve, that just funds the post-employment benefits, so there. Street fund, that total budget is 784,000, and then you can see a breakout between the revenues and expenditures. And then we are above the minimum policy ending fund balance there, and there live activity in that. And then you can see a breakout of all the past and previous years up until current ends of street fund. And then as far as what makes up the revenues for street fund, you have the fuel tax, street permits, and then we get grants because we're a free city. And then this is a breakout of expenditures between 2008 and 2019. Street fund expenditures, so budget five FTEs, engineering technician, it's subdivided between recurring expense utility, but that's in here. Criminal justice and forfeited proceeds, those are restricted. So basically for innovative law enforcement strategies, and then forfeited proceeds, that's drug enforcement. So with that, we have in here for tactical equipment, and then the... And then the security camera implementation we did at Columbus Park has been great. And we've actually used it to catch folks, vandalize and some of our new equipment. So we plan to continue tightening up security with Lions Park and getting set camera over there because we've had issues over Lions Park now. So ending fund balance there is just short of 6,000. And then for Fund 121, there's 2,500 from designated equipment. Hotel motel tax fund, that's relatively new because that was implemented around the time I got here. And we have a lodging tax advisory committee that essentially recommends. You all approved that the last meeting, so there's some money in here for Freedom Fest because common complaint we heard was lack of entertainment in Bounce House. And then also to continue promoting this through the marketing and the value visitor guide. General obligation debt service funds, we'll go over that again because we went over that Fund 201, the cars, that's just secured by full faith of taxpayers because it was voted on. Street capital contribution, so that has a traffic impact or mitigation fees. So there is 85,000 expected from Homestead wrapping up and then villages at Fort Wall Wall, which is that development that's going to go in behind Home Depot off Woodman Drive. And then 10,000, that's a transfer stream improvement fund. That's for the stop sign at Woodman and Larch as it has been a common complaint after 12th and Larch. And that's why pay for it so that way we aren't having to take that out of other funds developer could cover that. And then fund balance is just north of 16,000. Capital improvement funds, REIT 1, that's the real estate sales tax on the city, the first one. And there's budgeted 160,000 in that. It can be used for the projects in the facilities plan. And in 2017, that is the tax mechanism we use to fund the chip seal program. And then we also have in here a seal code, the Woodman Drive path, because all projects going on at Fourth and Academy Way, we now have the manpower to get to that this year. So ending fund balance is just shy of 300,000. And then capital improvement fund, that REIT 2, that's an additional fund that was implemented a couple of years back. And then this, there'll be some additional funds in here because as you may recall, this was a long while ago. We were authorized to essentially do a sale of the Lautterburg Columbus Park. And that's going on right now. They'll be brought to future use. Expenditures, wrapping up that state grant to study South College Place. And then fund money away for the Lions Park renovation. And then you can see the ending fund balance there. Street improvement fund, that has various street projects. So you can see here the Transportation Improvement Board grant for C Street as well as the one for Lampertie. We did not get Meadowbrook, but we did get Lampertie to grant overlay that from Larch to College. However, we do have two projects that are in purgatory, you may say, until TIB says whether or not they will fund them, complete street grant. They ended up stating that they'll do a call for which projects get funded out of that in the spring. As you may recall, Cedar Street from CA is in there, which is around half a million as is continuing the treatment of the cycle track and the pedestrian improvements on Fourth Street from Davis to College Avenue. So those are wild card projects, and I believe we have a good shot at that. And then Woodman and Larch, that's covered. And then this fund requires a transfer. So ending fund balance is just shy of 4,000. Facility maintenance reserve fund, so that is funded entirely from the transfers from current expenses, way isolate the projects we're doing on our facilities. There's quite a few, a lot of them, they're in the capital facility plans. So getting our fire system where that's up to date. The lid and upgrade, that would be covered by the Pacific Power incentive grant. And then with the addition of staff, we need to repurpose some of our workspace because there is a former jail and we shall remit that if this gets approved. So that way there's office space for new staff. And then Sally Board, that can be moved over to where vehicles are at right now by the police. Fire department, there's some renovations there. And then parking lot completion, that was a project that again, did not get done this year because the bids from all contractors were incredibly high. Equipment reserve program, theory behind this is working toward funding the equipment as it gets to end of its useful life. So that way we have the money in hand and the money is transferred from the responsible department's force of equipment. And there you can see a breakout in essence of the equipment reserve fund. And there's money coming from current expense and then street fund, which essentially that's being fed by current expense.
Can you remind me how many years we needed to do the catch-up for?
It varies depending on the piece of equipment. So I can't really give you just a flat answer to that.
Well, I thought that there was something when we initially set this up as like this is what it should be every year and in X number of years. It was different for everything, for every department? I thought there was just kind of like wherever you got the 237.
That's just the annual totals. I basically took what I probably could afford each year and kind of just spread it out. So it varies by piece of equipment.
Got it. But eventually we'll be caught up in a perfect world.
There is, like some of the work where in public works, for instance, where I think we extended up some and we're working toward condensing that now, like with the stormwater utility, they'll stop the streets for.
Yeah.
Economic development funds, that I had the activity from the College Avenue Road Street project. And there's money in there for closeout of that project. Then this is getting into the various utility funds for water and wastewater. And this is just, this is implementation in year three off of the rate studies FCS worked it for our utilities. So the operation and maintenance rate and the debt rate. And then you can see the breakout for operation and maintenance base. Rate funded capital, so 300,000 in 2019. And then equipment replacement reserve. And then you can see it will need a financial policy. Water utility, no changes in the staffing, it's a four and a quarter. And then capital is in its own capital specific fund, so we can better easily track it year to year. So the revenues is a little bit north 1.6 million. Reoccurring expenses is 1.64, so we're net positive. And then you can see this chart here between debt collection, charges for goods and services and connection fees. And then it's higher because of capital transfers out because there's just a lot of capital projects going on with C Street and a lot of things as you saw in the capital facility plan. And the expenses will again total 1.6. And then you can see the various projects here. The biggest ones is wrapping up the wells. The solar array, that'll be contingent on the investment grade audit report, which I should have for you by the next workshop. And then you can see all projects here, they're in the capital facility plan. And then this has various grants, Pacific Power, the appropriations, Department of Commerce, and then the revenue bond. And then this is basically the breakout for our drinking water state revolving fund for the well projects. The water debt service, this is the breakout essentially for the drinking water funds. So of that, 50% is forgiven because of the critical nature of the well. So the totals, I mean, is just around 5.4 million. Wastewater utility, so again, this is just following the utility rate study that was done a while back. So 5% increase in operating base and usage rate, so you'll see that. And then CH2M, we want to work with them to take over the poplar farm management after tree removal. We're trying to get the tree removal, people get out there to finish it though, which has been a challenge. So you can see transferring the debt service and then transfer out for the rate funded capital. And then the recurring revenues and expenses, so the net of that is a little north 272,000. Wastewater, there are some concerns there just because the projects associated with that utility are very expensive. I mentioned at length about the wastewater treatment plan. And then even the trunk line for Southwest College Place. So again, the rate model, it shows in 2023 that there could, that there is an issue with that as far as the shortfall. So we do need to address long-term that utility. There's things we can do, such as going over Olympia and trying to lengthen the improvements for the treatment plan, but it's just very capital intensive activities. Here's a charge for goods and services, debt and connection fees. And then expenses are just shy of 2 million. And then the capital, this budget in here is the engineering we went over. C Street, 180,000 replace a sewer line. There's a line by C and Road Street that doesn't have like a bottom to it that we need to fix. And then that Southwest College Place trunk line, it's a very fluid project though, as we're having a lot of dialogue with the development community and a lot of the folks. That's a placeholder. So you can see the funding breakout for the capital projects and purchases in wastewater. And then the debt, we need the financial policy for the year of the debt service. And then stormwater utility, yeah, that just to rehash out the funds for capital and the fund which covers on that was created and they'll be implemented at the first of the year. The budget on that is 371,000. There is that transfer for the seed money. And then we'll be, and then our ending fund balance will be above minimum. And then the capital purchases, street sweeper through USDA C Street. There is a component from the TIB grant that will fund that. And then engineering. And then you can see just a breakout on the various grants and loans. Because with Department of Ecology, we're wrapping up the stormwater plan grant, they increase the amount of funds and scope on that. And then the TIB grant and then the USDA grant, 11% sweeper. And then as you can see here, the transfers are fully funded from the other funds. And then the ERNR, this is a graph of the revenues and expenditures going back in 2010. And then flexible spending, that's just where the employee flex spending contributions are at. And funds are withdrawn when the flex accounts used. So budget recap, fund balance, you can see essentially a breakout between revenues and expenditures. And this year is just a very capital intensive year. We've been going to get a lot of grants, but yeah, there's just a lot of languishing projects that we're now getting to and we're getting our staff and backup. So that is a picture of that. Sarah, do you have any questions?
Any other questions though?
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello.
Per se, the target for, can we talk about the rainy day fund? Is that, how would you describe that fund? Is it, is it a singular, I'm sorry, is it a singular fund or is it a group of funds? We have a single rainy day fund?
We don't actually have a current, like a general fund rainy day fund. We do have the fund, the ending fund balance, which is basically a rainy day fund in the regular current expense fund. So I think there's, you're going back to C.
I was trying to, there's lots of slides.
So yeah, there is some separate funds that will be up for that. According to our financial policy, I think we had some other steps in place before we got to actually setting up that other fund, so.
Okay.
Right now, it's just a series of fund balances.
That's what I was wondering, I was looking through it, I didn't, I haven't seen that terminology. And so it's a series of funds then when you look at the, because as you go through the presentation, there's reserves in certain buckets. And the goal is a percentage eventually is to have, how much in that rainy day fund?
The 20.
20%?
Yeah.
We have.
Yeah.
Okay. Just, okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, we're doing good at current expense right now. Our big issue really is wastewater just because of everything I've gone over in the past.
Other questions for Ms. Kilgore or Mr. Rizzatello? Seeing none, thank you both very much. Mr. Peterson.
I would just add, thank you so much. You can go through this, a lot of hard work. You know, these are weekends, long evenings, a lot of angst sometimes. And it's nice to see a graphical, I would call it, presentation to what can be kind of hard, cold, black and white numbers on a spreadsheet. And this is, I think it brings out meaning and a connection to the activity. So thank you all for your hard work.
Well, thanks. I mean, the numbers on capital may be a bit scary, but on the bright side of it, at least we have a plan for equipment, IT and capital to follow, which is a good thing.
Thanks.
So I'd like to open the public hearing on the preliminary fiscal year 19 budget. Anybody wishing to testify for or against the fiscal year 19 budget, please come to my phone, state your name and address. Second time, anybody wishing to testify for or against the preliminary fiscal year 19 budget, please come forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anybody wishing to testify for or against the preliminary fiscal year 19 budget, step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the hearing?
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Rizzatello, Ms. Kilgore. I hope your voice returns. Mr. Rizzatello, now on to action items, Columbia Rural Electric franchise.
Thank you, Mayor. Introduce us, the last council meeting, the Columbia REA franchise. We found out that expired a couple of years ago. Worked to rectify that and get a new franchise on books. It's a lot easier now since we have that standardized franchise code in our municipal code. So it's just referencing all of that. It's for a 10-year period, which is in said code. So it's pretty much adopting a franchise which references a bunch of stuff that's in our municipal code, so.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello. Mr. Cleveland.
If the municipal code changed, would that retroactively alter the agreement then? Or would it essentially be the municipal code at this time?
At this time, so, yeah.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-025, which initiates a 10-year franchise with the Columbia Rural Electric Association. I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 18-025, which initiates a 10-year franchise with the Columbia Rural Electric Association to operate in the public ways of the City of College Place.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Nysel, farmer and artisan market handbook fee structure for fiscal 2019.
Hi. So this is just a quick overview, we talked about it last time. So basically, the handbook I sent out to several farm market vendors. And I've received positive feedback, a couple of them had questions on a couple of things, but minimal positive feedback. And so we would just like to answer any questions if you have questions about it. I had some little slides in there, if you had any thing you'd like me to go over.
Ms. Selby.
So on that page where you hold the fees, that fee is for renting a spot for the entire season?
That is, the, the best way that I could do a comparison was to do an eight week. Because eight weeks is what gets them the discounted rates for what we were doing. They have to commit to at least eight weeks and then they get the discounted rates. So that was the best way with, as you can see on this slide, I mean, the markets charge a really wide variety of things. So that was the best way that I could get an apples to apples kind of comparison. So if, if the market offered a reserved space and preferred, you know, discounted rates, things of that nature, that's what the comparison is.
So what exactly would our people pay if they, if they just wanted a week or two, or if they wanted?
So. The rates, a daily fee, they would pay a $10 application and then $20 a day, which is what our current special events fee is for vendors like for Winterfest if they're not a farm market vendor. So that's what, what they would pay for, per event. Walla Walla, which is the closest market, their daily fee is 30. So for a standard booth. And they don't, they're, they don't have any non-member, they have to pay a minimum of $40 to, to be a, a market vendor. And then 30 per day. So basically, the proposed changes would be for the membership vendors, they pay $50 annual fee. That fee is dedicated to the promotion of the market. And that vendor would have their business name included in the promotional items. They would get a discounted rate on the daily fees and the electrical fees. They would be allowed to have reserved spaces for any dates that they select at the time of the, the application. And a 50% discount on any additional events. And a 10% discount on the daily and the electrical fees if they select them and pay them at the time of the application.
Ms. Selby.
I would like to move that we approve the new fee structure fees for the 2019 College Place Farmers and Farmers in Market.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Been moved by Ms. Selby and seconded by Ms. Sherman, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Nysel, Mr. Rizzatello. Interlocal agreement between City College Place and College Place School District number 215.
Basically, this agreement just allows us to cooperate on purchasing equipment, going after grants. Pretty much is a very general agreement for agreements that will play nice. And, and also we, as long as we mutually agree, we can add other parties to this later. It'll, it'll help us essentially get grants for future park properties, equipment, things like that. So it's advantageous for both parties involved. This is also going through their board as well.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move to approve resolution number 18-043, which permits the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement between the city and the College Place School District regarding the cooperation cooperative use of facilities, equipment and personnel.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Rizzatello. Let's move along to 2019 state and federal legislative agenda.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. The legislative agenda, we went over this at the last workshop and introduced it at the last meeting. It just covers a lot of our key capital facility projects such as treatment plant lines, park and C Street. And then also trying to advocate for that local revitalization, local infrastructure finance tool reauthorization, which in essence would help fund economic development activities such as like running out that trunk line. That's what that basically would do because it expired years ago and would bring it back. So that's in there, as well as looking at the property tax issue and trying to pursue a fix for recycling.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello?
Motion to adopt resolution number 18-044, which adopts the 2019 state federal legislative priorities. Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Mr. Fobbit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Ricard, Pittsburgh annexation.
Lisa, could you pull up the map that shows the two persons speaking? So we received an annexation application for 842 Northeast Spitzemberg, which is the, that rectangle there, right out of Spitzemberg. They have a failing septic system and need to connect to our, our system, our sewer main in Spitzemberg. They're in our, they're an island in our UGA, so we can annex them. On Monday, it was discovered by Mr. Hartwig, who was going through some property records, that we actually have a covenant to annex for 324 Northeast Lambert, just, just right here. That was signed in 1991. At the time, they're, they, they have a failing septic system and need to connect to the city sewer. But they were not contiguous, so they could not annex at the time. Lambert and all the properties to the west of that property are in the city. So I, it's still in the same ownership of, to the person that signed the agreement. I contacted him yesterday and he doesn't have the objections being in the city for the agreement. And would propose that the, to modify the boundaries of the annexation to include this property as well. So the motion we're hearing tonight, so it's a 60% annexation petition methods that we're using. And so the first step in the process is, one, to determine the boundaries of the annexation. So you have the option to accept as the application was proposed, reject it or geographically modify it. So what I'm proposing is that we modify the boundaries. And then the second items, whether the city will require the simultaneous adoption of zoning regulations. The zoning proposed for this area would be our single family residential. And then the third item is whether the city would require the assumption of all or any portion of existing, existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed. So that's the proposal tonight. And then also, there's a fourth item and that's that we're setting a public hearing date for January 8th, 2019.
Questions for Mr. Ricard? Mr. Peterson?
So I had a failing system in 91, obviously they went through it and it, sewer system and had fixed that, obviously.
Yeah, so they're, they're connected to our city sewer.
Or the.
The property at 840, or 324 Lambert.
Oh, okay.
They're connected, they've been connected since 91.
I got you, I got you, okay.
That's why they're in agreement.
Okay.
And just for clarity, the areas outlined in yellow are not within the city limits.
Right, yeah, so these are, these are pretty much this entire block minus the corner of C and Lambert. Are, it's one large county island, but another one here, some other ones around here. We're chipping away, I don't know.
Questions? Ms. Selby?
I have a question about your recommended action. Because it says to accept the annexation as proposed. Shouldn't it be accept the annexation as modified and proposed by staff?
I think that would be an appropriate change.
I thought I did change that.
We did change it, but I don't think we got it quite right. So motion to modify the annexation, if we just struck out as proposed, just say motion to modify the annexation to include 324 Northeast Lambert have. Or we could say to include both 324 Northeast Lambert have and 842 Northeast Spitzemberg.
Modify the proposed annexation to include 324.
I'll let you handle that motion.
Ms. Selby?
I'd like to make a motion that we modify the annexation, the proposed annexation of 842 Northeast Spitzemberg to include that property and property at 324 Lambert.
Northeast Lambert.
Northeast Lambert. And require the simultaneous adoption of zoning regulations and assign the zoning of SFR Single Family Residential. Require the assumption of all or any portion of existing city indebtedness by the area to be annexed and set a public hearing date of January 8th, 2019.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, very carefully. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Peterson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Ricard and Ms. Selby. Mr. Hartwig, amendment number three for the wastewater treatment plant operation.
I'm very happy to bring amendment number three to you because I have been very pleased with CH2M's operation of our wastewater treatment plant. And so I do have Willie Brashir, he's the project manager with the, for the college place, Walla Walla's wastewater facility. And Paul Olson is the plant superintendent for our facility. So I'm going to turn it over to Willie and he can talk about this contract amendment a little bit.
So this contract amendment is just what I call annual, it's just a fee change according to what we've seen, the way the plan's been around and what we need to modify. Just pulls a section out of the contract, says to me, puts in this new one and just changes the numbers. So that's all this one is this year. A couple of things I wanted to let you guys know about is one, Jacobs now. We were acquired in December of last year by Jacobs Engineering Company. Legally, we're still CH, nothing changes on contracts and any of that stuff. Now we are Jacobs, we're very huge now. Out at the plant, stuff I'd like to point out is the flow meter that Mike mentioned earlier. Since it's been changed, we've noted a 24% or 180,000 gallon per day lowering of the inflow. The instantaneous peaks have lowered by 42% or about 860 gallons a minute. 720 gallon, 720 gallons a minute is a million gallons. Let's see what else we got going here. We've, in the collection system, we've so far in 2018 cleaned 7.2 miles of lines. There's 300, 2,348 feet of hotspots that we have to go to a lot or the problem areas where we get called out on, have to reuse, require extra, extra care. We have three Nerrols blowers, we've had to replace two of them this year. They're kind of spendy and they're very, very sensitive equipment. We've got some lighting fail outside and we went with sustainable LED lights, which are nice. Lift station number three's had issues with its electrical system, so we managed to get some of that repaired, even though the generator we have right now only runs one of the two pumps. So it really gets going, it might be an issue down the road to look at. And then when we came on board in April of 2016, you had disc filters, which are tertiary vinyl treatment. They've been off for a long time and we turned them back on. We're getting ready to replace all of the carpeting, which is basically what it is, carpet on a big disc. That's a big project. We're very happy with the way that those things have been running since we've been doing it. Those are just the highlights. Paul is actually the project manager, I just oversee a couple of projects too besides.
Questions, Ms. Selby?
I'm sorry, without the contract, I'm just seeing the deletions and replacements. Could you explain how the article D.1.1 amount and the D.1.101 amounts fit together?
Yeah, those two together.
Because I was confused if, what the direct cost versus the compensation. Is it part of the compensation or is it?
The D.1.101, the 891,363 is the costs that to, to run the plant excluding the repair costs, which are $75,000, which we didn't change from last year, which is D.1.201. The management fee is the markup, the 17%. So you add those three numbers together and that gets the base fee, which is, and then you get the rebates on what we don't spend.
Okay, so it's not a million, 42,000, 800 plus?
No.
891,000, okay.
That, that top number is those three added up.
Okay.
Well, I shouldn't have given you that much.
I know, I'm sorry.
That's, that's funny, yeah.
This one's already typed up, so we'll just go with this.
Okay, that's not a great.
Other questions?
Mr. Peterson? So for, I don't want to cover the capital costs. When you look forward, you talked about repairs happening with some, I'm sorry, the last thing with the carpet.
Disc filters.
Disc filters, so those are in your budget, those are things that you've looked into the future, or is that separate?
Some of them are, it depends. Our, our limit is, so anything that's $5,000, we cover out of repairs. And then like the carpets are going to be quite a bit more than that. So that'll be a, a capital expense and the city will cover that cost and allow them to put in.
Okay.
We repair anything up like the lights and a bunch of things like that.
Okay, okay, thank you. Apologize for that outburst.
We'll be coming back sometime in the future when we finalize these costs for these filters for approval and authorization from the council.
Great.
Thank you.
Just so you know, the budget, we had budgeted a million, 50,000 comes in at a million 40, so we have that in the budget.
Any other questions for Mr. Hartwig or our partners from the plant? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to execute Amendment Number Three to agreement dated March 16th, 2016 for operation and maintenance services.
It's been moved, it's been moved by Ms. Sherman. There was a second by?
Selby.
Ms. Selby? Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
I do.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Hartwig. Mr. Ricard, Historic Property Survey Award Contract.
So, uh, we received an award in the amount of $10,000 to do a, um, from DAP to Department of Archaeology and Historic Preservation, um, to do a historic property survey of properties that are 60 years or older. And so, um, we had, we, we had two proposals, um, and we've selected Northwest Finacular in the amount not to exceed $10,000. And, um, we are asking them to authorize a city administrator to enter into a contract with Northwest Finacular. Um, yeah, it's better. They're, they're, they will study, they'll do research on approximately 50 properties. The Historic Preservation Commission has identified a list of, I think they have probably close to 60 properties. They'll do research and provide reports. They'll enter, um, uh, the results into the state system. So, and what this will enable the individual property owners to do if they show, uh, so wish to do so, um, they can register locally with us on our register, and then they can also apply their national registration, and that will make them eligible to apply for grants for renovations of their historic properties.
Questions for Mr. Ricard? Seeing none, is there a motion? Mr. Peterson?
I move to authorize the city administrator to enter into a contract with Northwest Finacular in a amount not to exceed the $10,000 to perform an historic property survey.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Bobbin. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Mr. Rosatello, United Way of Walla Walla County Program Funding Administration Memorandum of Understanding for Youth Recreation Program for Summer 2019. I said it all with one breath.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this is a continuation of the pilot program we ran this last summer. Uh, if you recall, we partnered with United Way. They provided some, uh, quite a bit of grant funding, matched our funding, uh, and then we issued RFP for providers for, uh, summer rec programs. Uh, that was positively received. A lot of residents like that. Common complaint we heard about though is folks wish that they knew it existed earlier. Uh, so that is what we're trying to get ahead of this year. Uh, so this has already gone through the United Way Board. They have approved it. They will be given grant funds again to make this go. Uh, I talked to Wal-Mart, same thing. They will be dedicating funds too for this. Uh, so yeah, this is just, uh, to end a memorandum of understanding for the fund administration, and so we can cooperate with them and, uh, get requests for proposals issued for the Recreation Act of these for next summer.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll motion to adopt Resolution Number 18-55, authorize the city administrator to sign the memorandum of understanding, United Way of Walla Walla County Regarding Program Fund Administration for 2019 Summer Youth Recreation Program.
Been moved by Mr., in one, in one breath, it's been moved by Mr. Cleveland. Is there a second?
Uh, Selby already started.
Oh, Ms. Selby, I am, I'm sorry, I'm deaf in my right ear today. It's been moved, uh, moved by Mr. Cleveland, seconded by Ms. Selby. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Gordon, Water System Consolidation Project, Well Number One Drilling Contract.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is the first of several contracts we anticipate as a part of the CCF Water Consolidation Project. Which is good news, right? And we have one well really in operation right now, one that's kind of struggling. So this will put another one back online. Anyway, we went ahead and advertised for bids on October 26th, November 2nd, in Union Bullock and City Tracey Herald. We had two bids come back in, uh, one from Schneider Equipment, uh, for $695, $462.60, and one for, from Holt Services Inc. for a bit more, $784,773,078. RH2, our design consultant, has reviewed the bids and has recommended that we award the contract to Schneider Equipment for that $695,000, $462.60. Uh, I do want to point out that, um, we are going to, uh, urge the mayor not to sign this contract until a couple of things happen. We need to finish our cultural resources review, and we anticipate that'll be completed uh, first week in January, we're hopeful. Might be a little bit longer than that. And the second thing is we just need to wrap up our easement to actually place, have a legal right to actually place the well in the CCF property. So those are two things yet that are out there. We have 90 days according to the contract to sign it and to award that contract and actually execute the agreement. So, tonight, we're asking council to consider, um, providing the mayor with the authority to execute that contract once we have those two contingencies taken through.
Questions for Mr. Gordon?
Does this need to change if we have, we are adding in contingencies, what we need to say here?
Nope.
Okay.
The, uh, what we're doing is we're basically giving the mayor authority to award it. We're just adding a hold on until the, uh, till those two are met, until the cultural resources and easement sign.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with Snyder Equipment Incorporated to drill well number one for $695,000, $462.60 with an additional 15% contingency for a total expenditure authorization not to exceed 799, 781.99.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Cleveland, I believe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Let's hope January, we have a hole in the ground.
The frozen ground.
And finally, on the action items this evening is application for pre-membership with Washington City's Insurance Authority, Ms. Doring.
All right. I hear you have to talk about the insurance. Um, I'm hoping tonight that the council will authorize the city to send notice to Washington City's Insurance Authority, WCI, that we would like to be considered for full membership beginning December 1st, 2018. Um, at the last meeting, um, you approved, um, that we send, um, notice to CIAW, our current provider, um, of our intention to withdraw, um, December 1st, 2018. We requested quotes from, um, three agencies, one of which is CIAW's now, it's just, um, RNSA that is through AWC and, um, WCIA. Um, the quoted premiums are very similar, but after careful consideration, the administration recommends membership with WCIA. They offer broad liability coverage, a strong financial position, extensive trainings, and a robust pre-defense program. Something I do want to note on my comparison up there is the net position for WCIA. That actually is this 2016 figure. 2017, it was like 60 million. Um, anyway, I just wanted to know that that's incorrect. Um, so if we commit to full membership, um, beginning December 1st, 2019, um, and their, and their board approves us, we'll be eligible for pre-membership, which means that we will be, um, able to participate in any of the WCIA trainings at no cost from the time that we're approved, um, through the time that we would actually sign up for full membership. Um, and also have access to their dedicated risk management representative. So, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions from Ms. Doring? Mr. Peterson?
The fund reserves, is there a reinsurance? Do these, do these companies go out and, um, so they've got, they've got a stated amount, a position of 60 million, approximately? Is there, like, yeah, I guess my question is, is there a reinsurance? Are they going out into another market and looking for funds beyond that, or how does that work?
They, they, they do have underwriters. If, if that's what you're asking, above that, sixty.
I'm sorry, yeah, I wasn't real clear, but...
Sixty is the liquid and, that they have now. Yeah. And, and I would just add the, uh, we're recommending WCIA too because it's a pool of a lot of the big cities, so we would be a smaller fish in a bigger pond, whereas where RNSA, we would actually be one of the biggest fish in a shrinking pond, and two cities I respect just, uh, defected over a WCIA, so.
Thanks.
Ms. Selby?
So, um, the pre-membership is, does not include a premium. We just start paying once we're a member, right? But it's by this too?
Yeah.
You know, being a member.
Right.
Right. Or else you would have to pay for whatever services, you know, trainings, whatever we had received in that time, right? So it's like we're engaged but not married, and if we break up, we have to give the rent back? Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Any further questions for Ms. Doring? I don't think there's a better analogy than, Ms. Selby?
I would move to per Resolution 18-46, authorize the city to send notice to WCIA of their desire to be considered for full membership beginning December 1st, 2019, and pre-membership immediately.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Sherman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Doring.
We just put a ring on it.
It's a one-carat, right? Mr. Rosatello, IT Plan Equipment Replacement Plan Six-Year Booklets.
Uh, I won't go through all this. I would, I would just add that I made the PowerPoint booklets, just like I did for capital facility plan for both equipment replacement for next six years and information technology for next six years. There's information, how it funded, where it funded from, and what said software does in the IT plan. Uh, so, uh, please, uh, look at that, review it. If you have any questions, let me know.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello? This isn't nearly as formidable as the capital plan. It's only another, what, $10 million, Mike?
It, well, the equipment's below that even. It's about three over six years, so.
Ms. Selby?
I'd just like to say thank you for taking the time to put these booklets together. They're, you know, huge help.
Yeah, no problem. Well, it is, but the one thing I'll say with the IT too, when you look back historically, is how we've paid for the staffing with our contract with Inner Mountain and interns. That isn't all in the information technology fund, some of that's been incurring expense. So the booklet actually aggregates everything, so you can see truly what we're paying for in a solid IT expense.
Well, and I hope that citizens will take advantage of these, to realize where our money goes and how it's made.
Uh, I, I would say in the city news letter and on social media, we actually have a budget portal that has all of this, and we widely advertise this, advertise it. Hopefully people look, who knows though?
You don't have a thing that tells you how many people click through?
Uh, I do, I'd have to check it lately. Well, cut, last month it wasn't too great.
I'm sure it's skyrocketed.
Yeah.
Other questions for Mr. Rosatello? Tremendous amount of work has been done in, in tying this to strategic planning, and thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Did, sorry, did you just pass two years here?
Yeah.
Two. Wow, it's gone.
Yeah, thanks.
Have a lot, don't you mind?
Next item, Resolution Declaring Certain Events as Official Community Events. Mr. Rosatello?
Okay, so the, this ties back to an article from Municipal Research Services Center, and then talking with, uh, other municipalities. Evidently, the auditor's office is starting to nitpick some cities on what are community events and which ones aren't community events, and if you're gifting funds or if you are in, uh, way around it, is you, uh, need to pass a resolution that says, hey, X, Y, and Z are community events. So evidently now we need to do that, so that's what this is, so.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello? It's fairly straightforward.
Yeah.
Block Party, Farmer's Market, Movies at the Park, Freedom Festival, Arbor Day, Fall Festival, Walla Walla Valley Veterans Day Parade, and Winter Fest are the events being Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Rosatello. And finally, Stormwater Operational Court, Mr. Gordon?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we may not be saving the best for last, but I think we'll get through it quickly. So you folks have seen this before, and, uh, just wanted to bring that up. Before I get into this, I just wanted to give you a quick update. Today, we came to bring up the scope for the funding for the plan behind the stormwater utility that we've been working on. So, we had another $88,000 in offers. Uh, the mayor is certainly signing that, and we'll be in touch with him. So, with that said, you have seen this before. This is information, uh, that we presented at the November 6th workshop. This is really the code underlying our stormwater utility. Uh, we haven't made any changes, with one exception, I'll get into that. And, uh, one of the things we're doing here is we're setting this up for, at the next meeting, bring up to you for adoption. Okay, so, uh, just in brief, I'll go ahead and go through some of these here. Sure, do it correctly. Yeah, there we go. So, um, part of the code has to do with the illicit discharge detection and elimination program, and this is really where you go out and check to make sure people aren't dumping materials that we don't want to see in the creeks, in our storm basins and so forth, catch basins. So it basically prohibits everything but stormwater from going into storm drains, um, except for, there's some exceptions, and we're over there. Um, and we prohibit, obviously, illicit discharges as defined. And then we also should mention that we'll be in compliance with any other NPDs permits. You can have NPDs permits that are issued for other entities as well. Notify on spills, and then we enforce, beginning with education, then moving into technical assistance, and then finally stop work notices and other things we're, um, enforcement-related. Uh, we also have a section that we'll be adding, or proposing to add to the code that has to do with just the management of the program. Construction site stormwater line control and post-construction stormwater management. It's really two parts, two sides of the same coin. One is during construction, you have all the water, the stormwater coming out of the site with all the, um, sediment and so forth, and we control that. Um, and then likewise, once the project is done, we'll make sure long-term that the stormwater coming out that site is controlled, uh, not just with water quality, but in terms of flow control, that we're not doing damage in terms of flood control. Uh, requires compliance with seven core elements of permit, uh, provides for design standards and process. It codifies, um, the way we do business here and have done business in the past, and that is basically we require professional engineers to sign off and certify that their designs comply with the stormwater manual and with our standards. And then once they're built, they also certify that they were built according to the design that they initially gave us, okay? The intent and the background of that is it really does put the risk on that engineer, and it leaves us a quite a bit of staff time in the same, in the same field group, so that's why we do it. Uh, provides protection of facilities and water courses. Requires recording spills, verifies ownership responsibility for maintenance of facilities. Often we'll have private facilities, and there'll be private obligations to take care of those facilities. Um, and then it also provides the dedication of private facilities to the city once they are constructed. So, the very core of what we work with mostly here at the city has to do, any subsequent to this point, has to do with how we actually enforce stormwater requirements on projects. And that's what this is all about. Post-construction, after we've... And that's what this is all about, the post-construction, after we've constructed. And what we're doing is we're kind of making a little bit of a shift. In the past, what we've done is we've made sure that all the water stayed on-site and we infiltrated the water on-site. But in terms of trying to both take care and manage stormwater responsibly and also be a community open to development, what we're doing is we're now saying, we're going to take the stormwater into our public facilities as much as possible. Not all of it, a lot of the commercial, the multifamily, so those other non-residential kinds of facilities may still have their own stormwater. But in general, we're trying to take that water, relieves the burden, as it were, on a lot of the development and take it into our right-of-way. This stormwater construction management, we're not requiring it for standalone, isolated homes. If it's a big development like Homestead or one of the other ones, yes, they are doing it as a part of a plan, as a part. But when it comes to standalone, single-family homes that are sitting out there, we're not requiring anything for them. We are requiring private facilities on all of the lots unless out of a public capacity is available downstream. Facilities, certain areas draining away from right-of-way safe property, even use them to be owned and maintained, located on private property. So if it actually drains away from our public right-of-way, we'll look at those facilities that ultimately those will belong to that private property. So if the water's going away, it's going to the creek, it's going off their lawn, going off the back of the property, doesn't touch the right-of-way, that's their, that's their stormwater facility, not ours. And then what we're looking at is a 100-year, 24-hour storm design for public facilities and a 25-year, 24-hour storm design for private facilities. It recently had a little bit higher, looks like a lot of it's higher, but it's really about 11% and 12% larger capacity storm facility. For public facilities, it gives it a little bit more redundancy. We have to protect downstream folks receiving too much water and maybe flooding out their property, so it gives us a little bit of a safety factor there. We're not requiring the same thing for the private facilities, those typically will end up in a creek somewhere. So the thing that we're doing new that we did not discuss at the last meeting, that we actually discussed internally as a staff, I think it's a good idea, is this can be, stormwater can be really an intense process as far as the design effort is for the developer and it costs a lot of money, takes a lot of time and effort. And so we're looking for kind of prescriptive fix where they can just come in and say, you know, we may end up designing this a little bit larger than it needs to be, but it's going to be a lot easier to design, we can get through the process faster, it can be done. So what we've come up with is basically the use of rain gutters that pipe to the front for our right-of-way. So if they can get their, their peruse area, their rooftops and their concrete, everything else, to our right-of-way through gutters and whatever else pop up, drains, then all they have to do is estimate the amount of water coming out of the imperious areas on the property and we're good. They don't have to worry about all their topography and where all flows and everything else, because really, technically speaking, it's very similar to what it was before they put stuff in. So what it will result in is a bit larger facilities, probably by average, but a lot easier process for people. And they don't have to do it, they can still do the traditional design and go through the process, let's there from that day on. So that's, that's what we've added. And this is again, are the elements that we're expecting to bring back to you at the next meeting. I won't be here personally, but Mr. Peter Rosatello has ample experience in stormwater and will be the sitting resident expert at that particular meeting. Do you have anything questions?
Questions for Mr. Gordon and Mr. Rosatello? Ms. Selby?
How are we communicating this to developers and property owners, et cetera, engineers?
The, what's, it's on a case-by-case basis right now because we are, actually haven't approved it yet. So we're really not in a position to tell them you have to do, although we're kind of moving that direction, kind of nudging. So what we will do is it will be on our website, it will be on our processes and procedures and it'll be our standards, and we'll bring up them to their attention as projects come along, we'll say, hey, here's our standards, here's what we're expecting you to do and educate them on it. So we've already started that process on two projects, anticipating that we will approve this, we may not, but our current standard is still about what we're doing. It's just, this makes it a little bit more defined right now, in terms of words.
Have you gotten any comments from?
Not thus far. Not thus far. I think as we get into the weeds a little bit more on the projects, we might start getting a little bit of feedback. And the reality is, is as we go through this, there may be some changes. Every community out there does this all a little bit differently depending on what their objectives are. Ours are in shining lights, let's be responsible for our stormwater, but let's also be friendly to development. So that's kind of what's guiding this up.
Mr. Rosatello?
I would just say the, I brought this forward to our Economic Development Commission too, so they could review it and let folks know about it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. That is the end of our formal agenda. Is there any other business to bring forward from the commission? Ms. Selby?
Are we having a workshop the first Tuesday in December?
Yes, we are. December 4th.
Next Tuesday.
If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some would.
It's been, it's been moved by Ms. Sherman, seconded by Ms. Selby, and I actually heard it this time. We are adjourned.
I want to know who thinks 60 is older is historic.